Jeff?
No, I shouldn't walk around her.
There's not a paper.
Yeah.
You know, it's not. I get this phone call the other day, hurry to tell. She was checking the mail today, and they did throw the school football in there.
Oh, the textbooks.
The textbooks. I said, "That's..." They don't recycle them. They just put the wax in the truck.
Right.
And they go, "So, exactly." Sorry.
Right.
Yeah, it's fine.
Why didn't you tell us, they said? Now, what?
All right. Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the September 6th Land Board meeting. Would you join our Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance for the United States of America to the Republic where it stands on the nation and on the God in this little 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 town of Webster.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Fishon?
Here.
Mr. Jardina?
Here.
Mr. Coles?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Present.
Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
He's here.
Oh, he's on, you're on land, okay.
And Mrs. Wright?
Present.
Okay. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The Lake Road accessory structure. The second one is Parkside Drive accessory apartment. And the third one is flash car wash. So Mark, would you want to read the application?
For scheduled matter tonight, 1870 Lake Road accessory structure located at 1870 Lake Road. The applicant is Peter Garretts. He's requesting preliminary final site plan approval, which includes a public hearing associated with the construction of a 960 square foot accessory structure on a 5.16 acre parcel located in a large lot, single-family residential district under sections 225-36 and 228-10 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sure, go ahead. Okay, go ahead, do you just give your name and address again? Uh, Pete Garretts, 1870 Lake Road. And the application is for an accessory building. You were in for a sketch plan review. Excuse me. You went to the ZBA, got your variance, and you're set with that, or for the location?
Yes.
And so you're set with that, right?
Yep.
And we had looked at your drawing of it previously. I don't recall any... Did we have any issues with it anymore?
I think it was pretty cut and dried, wasn't it?
Yeah. And Jennifer, this is the 1870 Lake Road, obviously, and it's got the variance to put it first out on the outside of it.
Yeah.
Again, this is a public hearing. If there is anyone here wishing to speak either for or against, if you're not seeing anyone, bring it back to the board, close the public hearing. Anybody, any concerns?
No concerns at all.
Okay. We went through it all, we saw it, it meets all the requirements and everything, so you want to make, you want to make motion? We have to do a preliminary final, I guess, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Town of Webster planning board considered the request by applicant Peter Garretts to construct a 960 square foot accessory structure on a 5.16 acre parcel under the SGL number 037.03-1-40.2 located at 1870 Lake Road. The planning board classifies the proposed actions as a type 2 action under section 617(c)(12) of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject for review.
Second. You have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'll make a motion for preliminary approval for 1870 Lake Road accessory structure, subject to PRC comments. And subject to determination of the ZBA for requested variances, all improvements shall be constructed according to the specifications of the Town of Webster. All site work is being compliant with the standards of the Town of Webster, implied without requirements of any state, county, or town agency. Pings are subject to drawing number...
Yes, down here, let's see. Going by projects.
Uh, 1152-4.
1152-4.
Yeah, 1152-4.
December 5th, 1870, Dave. What you can do, Dave, what you, okay. I said you can make 225, what is it, 225-36?
Yeah.
The code, right?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you just...
Code 225-36.
Yep, 36. And with the, with the approved variances?
Yep.
That he's got.
So we need to say no personal use only here?
Well, you've got to do a final, that's it.
Oh, wait, all right, all right.
So for preliminary, did you have a motion in your second?
Second. Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Fishon?
Aye.
Okay, I'll carry on, I'll make a motion for final approval for 1870 Lake Road accessory structure, subject to PRC comments, subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government governmental fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction shall occur within one year, as deemed by the planning board, and expire on 9/6/2023.
First laws. The what? Just the first laws?
Yeah. Let's just check and see what's up down here. Subject to resolution final improvements. And this particular accessory building will not be used for any type of residential use or commercial use, strictly as a accessory building for a bachelor's.
Second.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Fishon?
Aye.
Okay, well, sir, good luck.
Second item on tonight's agenda, 1114 Parkside Drive accessory apartment located at 1114 Parkside Drive. The applicant, Michael Cadish, is requesting preliminary final site plan approval, along with a public hearing, to legalize an existing unpermitted accessory apartment on a 0.73 acre parcel located in an R3 single-family residential district under sections 225-40-1 and 228-10 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Yes, sir. Yes, hi, my name is Michael Cadish, and my personal address is 67 Horizon Drive, Webster, New York, 1465. And this is for my younger son, Edward, who bought this house. And we want to make legal this structure, what's already pre-existing. Just want to make it legal.
Okay, so what is it that you're... What is your goal? What is, what are you ultimately trying to accomplish with this?
I know it's been there, the structure has been there. Yeah.
The garage has been converted and so on over the past, but where are we getting out today?
Uh, I live about five minutes from that house for over 25 years. My son lives in Webster, less than five minutes from that house. So when we thought that, see that house, so we understand this would be great place for my younger son, so all our family would be very close by together. And also initial intention and what we see in this house, especially, most of it is a war in Ukraine. It's, we have a family who wants to come here, and this would be a great place. My son is going to move there with his fiancee, who's pregnant, and it would be enough place for them and for the family to come, or stay there for a year or two, or whatever it's going to need to be. So we see this house as a great...
With a structure and a place for...
Yes, yes. But like I said, we all live in very close proximity, and it's a great place to like be...
Communion for our family.
Yes, yeah.
So as near as I can see anyways, I think what you're trying to accomplish is to call it an accessory apartment.
Accessory apartment, correct. Yes.
All right, and there is a part of the code that relates to that. I think I read somewhere you have, there's two front doors?
Yes.
Does it have the apartment?
How many?
Oh, the apartment's one.
And the accessory apartment only one?
There's one or three?
Okay. And the whole building, it's got three. There is the main entrance to the main building, then there is a common hallway.
Sir, I'm sorry, can you talk into the microphone?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
There is one main entrance to the main building, then there is one common hallway, and one for the accessory apartment.
Oh, so there's three?
There's three total, yes, correct.
So then...
Besides the garage door, sorry.
So what are we making, three apartments?
Why three apartments? It's one main building, and then there is hallway. There is a front door to the main building, there is a door to the hallway, it's a common area, and then there is a door to that accessory apartment, or the existing structure.
Can I ask you a question? How long ago did you buy this house?
So she bought what, two months ago?
Two months ago? Was it sold, it was a multi-family home?
No.
Okay, it wasn't that sold as a...
No, it wasn't that sold.
And you understand that it's in a residential district, it's not now a family home?
Yeah.
But what you're proposing to use is this is a three-family home?
Why are you proposing, okay, there is a main structure. We are planning to put family members from Ukraine in there. It's a big enough house. That's what we want to do, separate that structure, accessory apartment, from the main building, so they have separate that apartment. The main building is going to be from above.
The main building is two apartments?
Well, it's not really two apartments.
It's not really two apartments? You know what, you know what we need, Dave?
It's two-story.
I don't want to drag this thing out all night. I know what you're talking about, I hear you, I think you need to have a good, clear definition of where the floor plan is. I'm looking at what you've got here, I'm not really totally understanding. Wonder what, the other, the other issue I have with it, what, I read somewhere, you want to put another electric system in there?
Yeah.
Why?
First of all, it's not enough power.
Well, wait a minute, hold on, what do you need to set enough power? Won't our GNE hook you up with more power?
Oh, maybe, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
Because I think part of the restriction in the accessory buildings, code, is that there's, you can have an apartment, like an in-law apartment?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Hold it, what you like, but there are restrictions, like the one front door in front, okay? That could be ways to say you got two doors, not three doors. The other thing I think you need to look at is you're putting electric, why would you put electric and not gas?
When we asked for electric...
Where's the microphone?
I'm sorry. When we asked for electric, me personally, I didn't know we can put there 400 amp service. That would be enough with one meter. I didn't know that, that's why we asked for two, so...
Why don't we go with the electric heating system?
Oh, 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 yeah, why wouldn't you put gas in there?
So this is one of the options we're considering right now, because what happened, they had a water boiler system in it, and they cut, when the bank owned it, they cut all the wires off. One of, one of the options that we thought of is electric base, because it would be the easiest one to install, and in the future, maybe we'll put solar panels that will offset that. And that's one, because to put a regular HVAC system in there is going to be very expensive, running ductors and so on and so on. So instead of putting money into that, maybe it'll make more sense to put in solar panels and then use base, electric base heaters. This is, again, this is, we're not completely sure which route to go. It's just, we're thinking and we're wanting to wait until after, to kind of figure out what's the best options for us.
Okay, so...
To put three, three HVAC systems, run ductors everywhere, it comes out to over $20,000. So we wanted to make sure that we choose the best options for us.
Yeah.
This is kind of, this is the, the thought, why?
I think, I think what you need to look at though is somehow, as best as possible, no more than two units would ever be able to go in there. It could be considered an in-law apartment, but you need to do some homework on this thing, because I'm totally in the dark with this, the way, the way it's shown. And I think there has to be some conformity to what the code says too. It can't be just cartilage and go and...
Well, we understand, like I said, we're, it's, it's in the process of figuring out which route.
Because the intent of that type of a structure in a residential, an R3 neighborhood, is to have an apartment, like for your mom, dad, you know, relatives.
Yeah.
In this case, relatives.
Yeah.
But it's got to conform to what the code says. And the reason for that, in other words, open inside, no partition walls, it's all got to be open. You can't, you can't, you got to be able to go from one side to the other. You know?
Yep.
Okay, so what you should have is a drawing showing, showing how that's going to work.
Tony?
Yes?
When do you got to, I mean, it's very, very clear to me, this is a three-family.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It can't be a three-family.
I got that 100%.
Okay, because there's two kitchens in the main building?
Three kitchens.
Two bedrooms, two bedrooms, two bathrooms?
Yeah.
Six bedrooms?
Yeah.
This is a three-family design. In a residential neighborhood, that's all that matters.
Well, that's why I'm saying, we need to have a drawing showing no more than two units, and then to conform with what the code says under accessory building, accessory apartments.
Isn't this, isn't there a maximum square footage for a 750 square feet for an in-law apartment?
Um, I have to look in the code, just, I think you're right, yeah.
Yeah, it's 35% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 700 square feet, whichever is less.
So then they're going to have to determine what part is the main section of the house, and what part's the 35 or less percent of?
I think we also need to get a nice detail of, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, this, this really is making up here. Um, all right, let's, let's back off a minute, unless you guys got something to add. I'm going to guess a bunch of your neighbors are nearby? Okay. All right, look, here's what we'll do. I'm just going to ask you to just be courteous and, you know...
No, we're, we're all a great community, and that's why we want to say to you, like, we're really good people, we're nothing, you just want to know.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay, look, why don't we do this, pull over there, and then you can come up, whoever wants to speak first can go ahead and come up to the podium there and go ahead and say what your feelings are. Just don't repeat everybody, repeating the same thing over and over, that's all. We're all, we're pretty aware of what's going on, so who wants to go first?
Me.
Go ahead. Oh, you can, you can actually see it, right? It's fine, that's all right, you're all right.
All right. Jay Scott, I live at 1109 Parkside Drive, K corner 2 property. Let me start off by saying, Webster where life is worth living. I'm a transplant from Tennessee County. I moved into my neighborhood after doing multiple, multiple, multiple times of research to meet neighbors and other people that live there. I work for the sheriff's office. I don't want a clubhouse next to us. We had enough problems with people breaking into cars throughout the summer and other issues. We do not need an apartment complex in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is a family. I trust my kids riding their bikes, walking dogs. There is not one of these individuals that is sitting here right now that will look out for my kids. I happen to know by personal business that there is crack houses on Bay Road and other stuff like that. And I'm not, I'm not labeling that as this. I do not want those people in our neighborhood. I moved into the neighborhood from an environment where I grew up with nothing around me, no neighbors. I am not afraid to leave my door unlocked, ask my neighbors to let the dogs out if we're gone, and that type of stuff. What I'm afraid of is the quality of people that will be coming into this neighborhood. We have an issue with people speeding. We live on a blind curb. My son almost got hit the other night by some knucklehead driving like an idiot. I mean, we're on a cut, we're on a cut through from Major Road to Old Bridge. We don't need to add traffic. We don't need to...
I think I got your picture.
My, my feeling is is it's a single-acre, it's a house, let's keep it like that.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
My name is Megan Scott. I'm associated with him. I also live at 1109 Parkside Drive. First, I want to thank you guys for, you know, trying to make something out of that property. It's been vacant for eight years now. And for the last eight years, myself, along with my neighbors, have mowed the lawn, done the leaves, called the cops, because there have been people squatting in that house. Went in and got rid of fox dens that have been implanted into that house. It's been, it's been a rough go. I'm from Fairport originally, where, you know, my husband always says, you know, the lawns are clean and no dandy lions and whatnot. So I take pride in having a aesthetically nice neighborhood. Right now, there's a pile of brush that has been sitting on the front lawn along the road for the last two and a half months. I don't want to look at it anymore. We've called the town. It's a blind curb. That's one more visual disturbance that drivers are seeing. That brush, that pile keeps growing bigger and bigger and bigger. Right there, for you to come into our neighborhood and do something like that, when the town has asked you to pick it up, to me, that's nothing but a slap in the face. And as my husband said, we're a community, we're a family, we value our relationships with each other, and we just want to ensure that the individuals that do move into our neighborhood are able to feel as welcomed as, you know, we, we all feel when, when we interact and engage in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. Pete DiMartino, 1110 Parkside. Just have a couple of questions. Edward Cadish is the owner on record, neither of these are Edward.
Right, he's a fourth, yes.
Oh, is that?
Natchez, okay, Natchez.
Okay. This wasn't important enough for him to be here?
Okay, you got to, you got to focus up here, go from top to bottom.
Okay, well, I, I feel if he's the owner, he should have taken the opportunity to represent himself. He signed a document saying he's going to be an owner occupant, so we're a little concerned based on how he's come into the neighborhood, how he's looking as Maggie described out front, with all the rubbish out front that hasn't been addressed. And, you know, I guess, if he signed a statement saying he's going to be an owner occupant, where has he been since May 12th, going closed? Okay, if they would see, we want to keep their property edible and ready to go. Without me here, I guess we can't really ask those questions, can we?
Well... What would be your question specifically?
He's, he's stated that he's going to be an owner occupant, so we got other family members here, he should be here representing himself and what his intentions are.
What are, how do you guys plan to do with that? Who's the actual owner of the property?
Edward, and he's going to live there in the main building, in the main building with his wife and his...
Still, we're raising.
Who are pregnant, hopefully. When I moved to this country seven years ago, I came with two kids, now I have four.
Okay, that's all right, you got you, listen, we don't have a story, just...
No, I'm just saying that...
Yeah, no, okay, so he is going to be living...
He's going to be living there, okay.
All right.
And Edward Bill, Edward's son, is next.
All right.
So at this point too, we have concerns, if the rehabilitation schedule is already five months into it, and the house looks worse than when they started.
Well, okay, we don't... No, I got you, I don't want to, you know, do any aesthetics in the room right now. Deal with the other issues first.
Yeah, I, I guess my big concern is if he's going to live there with other family members, I'm all for it, but I'm a little concerned that he has the resources to finish the project properly, and it's not going to turn back into a run one or two years down the road.
All right. All right, I think, I think we're getting just what you guys are standing for here.
John Calco, 1099 Parkside Drive. Lived there for 43 years. Just to give you a little background, that house we're speaking about was, a family owned it. They converted the two front garages into an apartment with an addition in the back for an in-law apartment, which we all were okay with that. It was the mother, the father had passed, the mother came in and the family was there, and it was there like that for 30-some years that I know of. Um, yes, and it was, after the one member died, I don't know what perspired on the whole thing, but it became unoccupied for over eight years. And now we've got this other predicament on our hands. But going back as a residential community, it was built in residential property with apparently permission to put an in-law apartment. We have no problem with that, but that's as far as we want to go. That's our neighborhood. And anybody wants to put together something else, that's not the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. I think what we're seeing here is a situation where, just one second.
Any good?
My mind slips away for some time. This side. If we, if we kind of focus on this thing being a duplex, not a duplex, an in-law apartment, something like what the gentleman just said, would that be acceptable to people going that direction? I mean, it's already there, we have to live with this.
Well, it's going to be verified.
Wait, 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 I don't want to hear, talk him, just a yes or no right now?
Yes.
A yes, okay.
Single family with an in-law.
I'm sorry?
Single family with an in-law.
Yeah, an in-law or a family member.
Yes, a family member.
Either way.
I mean, my, my concern is...
All right, you have to go back up to the mic.
Oh, well, he's looking up too.
Otherwise, it doesn't fit you up from there.
My, my concern is, and I think it's the concern of many of our neighbors, is that there are many properties on file that your family owns as rental properties, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you purchased this house knowing it was a single family with the possibility of an in-law and a residential apartment. Being the nosy neighbor... Um, being the nosy neighbor that I am, and if you move in, you'll find out, I'm, I'm Italian, like it is what it is.
I completely understand where it's coming from. I live on Gresby Drive, but it's bank-owned, same thing.
So you, you get it. We, we see how I get it.
I get it, I completely get it, where it's all coming from, I understand.
So I, I went over and I spoke with the construction workers, you know, hey, what are you guys doing? We're putting in three apartments. Okay, and that's when the phone call started. Now, you gentlemen, having multiple properties, you should have had the knowledge to know that what you were doing was illegal when it comes to the code of the town. If you are going to change a single-family dwelling and try to convert it into a three-family apartment, you need permits to do that. I mean, and I don't know anything about real estate, this is all, this is my first town hall meeting speaking, I don't know anything, but I do know that codes and permits are put in place to ensure that a situation like this doesn't get to, to this. So I feel like, you know, there's a ton of red flags being raised and all of this was, was kind of being done without the town's approval on, on what was really going to take place here, you know, like there was three families living in that apartment illegally eight years ago, but there was three families there.
How, how long have there been three doors in the front of the building? Way hidden, Joe.
We removed.
There's only one more.
One garage door that was blocked.
It's a garage door?
It was instead of a siding, basically, because it didn't.
Sorry, you got to use the mic.
We, we removed. The door? That, the door?
I blew it up.
Hell, yes.
Anyway, so we removed one garage door that was there, it's basically like a siding. We fixed it up with siding. Um, like I said, first of all, maybe we did a mistake that we should have stopped by, said hello and explained what we're doing. Uh, you talked to one of our contractors, we, we do real estate.
He can't face the microphone, because.
I don't think, does it work?
Yeah, don't look so close to her.
All right, so, all right, so my brother.
Don't look at her, look up here, please. I want to see you.
Okay, like I said, I understand the concerns that people have completely. In their place, I would probably have the same concerns. My brother is going to be an owner occupied in the buildings, you guys understand? We do intend, we have two families who are not in Ukraine that one of them is on our side and one has in my brother's fiance's side. That conventionally, at the beginning, they're moving because of the situation.
All right, I think I got that part, I read all that.
So.
I think what we've got to do, I think what we've got to do.
This is why I probably worry about it.
I think what we've got to do, we can go on all night here with this. We're just going in a circle with it. My opinion, you guys tell me right here. Should this be looked at as an in-law apartment, for starters, with just two units?
Yeah, it's a single family home with an in-law apartment.
Right, that's what we got, I think that's the direction to head with it.
Unfortunately, the plans we had are short.
Then, then, forget this all again, forget all these things. I think what, when you, when you come in, you need to have drawings showing, architectural drawings showing, get an architect to come over, lay it out, make your apartment, your brother's apartment, or whoever. Make the apartment that the other part of the family is moving in, so it's two families. Two, not three, two families. I understand they're coming from the Ukraine, God bless them, that's, that's a sad situation altogether, but we have to go by what the book says here. So you've got two families in there, you have one main front door, in a case, if it's an extreme case, there isn't another exit, that might be able to work out if the board goes along with that. You need one service going in, like gas and electric, not two. You can't make separate meters. And the interior, when he designs the interior of the building, your architect needs to be designed so that there's cross access from one to the other. You can't have a wall like an apartment, so it's got to be family.
I understand.
Okay, well, if you understand, then we're good. That's, that's the direction we got to go.
Can I get one point of clarification? One point of clarification?
Sure.
In the beginning, you had this little dialogue about family members.
Correct.
And the youngest one's going to live there.
Yeah.
Are you the youngest one?
No.
Edward's the oldest.
Edward, yeah, he's a truck driver.
So he, so he's the one that didn't bother showing up tonight?
It's not he didn't bother, it's like, he didn't show up, it doesn't work. He just started a job.
I, I think it's acceptable if he has a job, he can make it, he's being represented. I think the biggest thing here is the intent. And, and a lot of things with intent, the original intent is one thing and then it changes into another thing. So it's important, I guess the conversation has been that it is aligned with the town code and that it is an in-law apartment, but it does sound like, if I heard you correctly, that there's three families, because it'd be his family, he and his fiance, and his baby.
Correct, yes.
And then a whole family from her side and then a whole family from his side, so that's three families. And this is designed to look like three completely separate different apartments, so.
Again, I established that, I completely understand, like I said, uh, per code, it's supposed to be accessible for moving, this is exactly how it is right now. Okay, um, like I said, our intent is not to turn it to a rental. If we want to, we, as you guys found out, we have enough of those. Uh, my brother is going to live there. We, that's what we, I buy my own property, bank-owned, my family lives there right now. This is my brother's first house, that's why we're here, we, you don't probably even see him except on the, sometimes weekends, doing the landscape outside. With him, most of the time, out there fixing up the place with, with my guys. Again, I'm trying to help, you know, this family won't see me.
All right, we got it, you're repeating it over and over again. Um, let's, let's get a census up here. What do you guys feel, feel headed in the direction of what the code says?
The code, we got a code.
That's what I'm saying, so that direction, let it.
Well, I think it needs to.
No more, no more than two units. No more than two units. It has to be a family member in the second unit, one service for the whole building. And then conform with code, so you need to have an ar- an architect come over and draw you up some drawings.
If I do the drawing on a program that will be very clear for you, like architectural drawing. If I use an app instead of hiring an architect, if I do an architectural drawing, that will be very clear for you. What goes on, would that be okay?
That's what we need to have, an architect draw, that's what we get when we get these kinds of projects. Oh, no, no. Now, you have to have an architect do the drawings. Now, what we get is a set of architectural drawings. They come in, you know, you have them draw it, stamp it, and say, here's, here's what we want to do. It's like building a house. Because when you remodel it, you can't, you, we don't know what you're doing with your rafters and, uh, bearing walls coming out, you know what I mean? It's a whole different ballgame.
I understand what you're saying.
Well, okay, now we got it.
Moving on.
Josh, any permits issued for this? As a renovation concern?
No.
Uh, we can afford it for the rebuilding and we ought for another permit, uh, general remodeling here.
Yeah, they did inquire originally with the town. Our original answer was that a building permit wasn't needed because we, we're not believing it was mainly cosmetic, you know, changes. However, when we started getting additional phone calls and had, you know, staff drive by, it, it did rise to the level of needing a building permit, so we did reach out to them last week and ask them to cease all work until we get this straightened out.
Good.
But yes, they will, they intend on submitting a building permit for the work.
It's still been working.
All right, so we called prior to continue with call, then we, we said that we didn't, what we did was we did outside stuff, like I said. Uh, when before, I didn't even know that you guys have this discussion.
All right, you gotta, you gotta address the board, your head's going with this up.
Well, I'm trying to communicate.
Well, no, they can hear you. You got, you can get with us, not them.
Not them, okay, so, um, when we stopped by, again, this is pretty big house.
Right.
In the main building, we basically don't do any changes except cosmetics. In the accessory apartment, we had closets, this is where we came to ask for a general remodeling permit. And we were told that after this hearing, we can pay this. So, and while we were, while we were working, uh, we got a stop work order regarding the garage door that was removed, like I said, it was a siding, it wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't just for the garage door.
Well, this is, this is what I understood when I spoke with the.
That's, that's for the project, yeah. All right, look, um, I want to suggest a table list.
Oh, absolutely.
And, uh, get some drawings, outline what he needs to do. What you need to do is get a, get a copy of the code from the town and read it for an accessory apartment. And, or get an ar- get your architect, let him do it. Let him get a copy of it, they're, they're well aware of what the program is. And then you go by that, then you can lay out how you want to lay it out. There's two apartments, it's an in-law apartment, connected, so on and so forth. Go by the code, okay, want to do that?
Yeah.
Well, well.
You say two apartments?
One apartment.
Well, one apartment, well, two rooms.
I want, I want to ask you one question, though.
Sure.
You said you did cosmetic changes to the main building. Did you remove the full kitchen and bathroom from the basement of the house?
From the what?
The main portion of the house.
We removed the, well, we removed.
My understanding is the main portion of the house has always been a main one, you've got they have an entire bathroom and kitchen in the lower level. Bathroom and kitchen in the upper level. Bathroom and kitchen in the accessory apartment.
All right.
Or you made a bad shape, you just had to put new one.
So you, right now, the house as it stands has three separate living units. Lower level of the building, upper level, the upper level, and the accessory building.
When you enter to the front door, you go in up, then you go down.
Right.
From, from the sink, so I don't really understand.
Upstairs is a complete living area.
Yes, correct.
That has kitchen, bathroom, living room, bedrooms.
Dining room, correct.
You go downstairs, kitchen, bathroom, living room, bedrooms. It's a near image of the upstairs.
A little bit smaller.
Pretty much.
Yeah, pretty.
You also have a full unit up to the south side of the garage, which has kitchen, bathroom, living room, bedrooms. Three, these are three living units in one building. And you said you did cosmetic changes to the first building. What Tony is saying is that the architectural plans you come in show one kitchen, however many bathrooms you want in the main building, because that's going to be one family that lives in the main building. The accessory apartment is for the other family, family members. If that's what the accessory apartment is. They are interconnected, all three spaces are interconnected on the inside. You eliminate one of these third doors because you don't need three doors for two places.
One door to the main building?
You eliminate one of the doors from the outside. You do not need three exterior doors for a two-unit. The second unit of this thing is an accessory apartment to the main dwelling. The main dwelling has one family. The architectural drawings that you will bring back, that are prepared by an architect, will show one building, the main building, one family unit.
Okay.
An accessory apartment next to it. Those are the drawings that Tony is saying you are bringing back. It is not going to be a drawing that shows three separate living units. One main unit, one accessory apartment, exactly what the code says. Until that time, this entire application, it's not just tabled.
It's drawn.
It's drawn, or denied outright. And the whole work stops. And keep in mind, I live around the corner from this house. I know all these things. We know what's going on. We know there has been work going on there since to stop work for it.
I could, I didn't continue just on my own, I could.
Don't even say it. This is what Tony is requesting from you, this is what you'll give us. Right now, this application is not being put on hold. This is being denied. I would put forward the move.
Can, can you have a, you know, an in-law apartment, I think you can have a separate kitchen, I guess you can.
An in-law apartment can have a separate kitchen.
Right, definitely.
The main unit has a primary kitchen. An in-law apartment can have a whole suite.
This is a.
This is a. I, I, I built the Natchez. Where I had one damn good top door and an in-law under bottom. Which would be fine with this, all you got to do is eliminate the accessory apartment outside. Okay, but like he says, two units, and that's it.
All right, we'll let them decide it.
So we deny.
Okay, so, so, all right, I'll make a motion that we deny the application for the.
Eleven fourteen Parkside Drive.
Eleven fourteen Parkside Drive. Motion to, uh, the application, second.
We need standing by with the staff work order, all of this to.
Mr. Bishani.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mickel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wright.
Aye. The applicant is to have an architect redesign the building with one main quarters and one in-law apartment. Because that's two.
And no work?
Well, no work to be happening on the building, no, because you can't do anything, you have the architect.
He's going to stop work.
Yeah, it's on, it's the.
And you also got to get rid of the brushes in the front yard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get rid of all the brushes in the front yard and all the pile of lumber, which I don't know where that came from, those are back up.
One in front, one in back.
There's one in back too.
I brought it to go kind of bring more around, like I said, and the brushes were supposed to be out of there a long time ago.
All right, thank you, fellas.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Third and final application for the board tonight is located at ten thirteen Ridge Road. It is the ten thirteen Ridge Road Splash Car Wash. The applicant is Splash Car Wash Incorporated. They request preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval along with a public hearing associated with the construction of a seven thousand square foot car wash facility. Combined two point one six acre parcel located in an M C medium intensity commercial district under section two twenty-eight ten of the code of the town of Webster.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ed Martin, a licensed engineer with P D S. Uh, here tonight, also is the Clements, representative of the applicant and the architect Jeff Ladue. Um, Mr. Giardino read the applicant per- uh, application fairly thoroughly. I'm sure you're familiar with this site, it's, uh, almost across the road and directly opposite Wendy's, uh, immediately south of one oh four. The, uh, proposal is to construct a seven thousand square foot, uh, car wash. Um, we are doing splash car washes all over New York State and there's a very aggressive plan that, that they are pursuing. And I'll invite Mr. Clements forward to answer specific operational questions. I think you'll find that he knows more about the car, uh, wash industry and business and construction to operation than anybody you've met who's been involved, uh, for twenty-five plus years in, in that endeavor. Um, the engineering is very straightforward, I trust you had a chance to review the plans. We propose, uh, ingress to the site at the southeast corner. We maximize, uh, stacking on the site, we're well over seventy, uh, potential cars on site. Uh, stacking to, uh, either utilize the single tunnel or the two, uh, pull-through car washes. Uh, stacking to, uh, either utilize the single tunnel or the two, uh, pull-through car washes immediately to the west of the, the tunnel. Um, typical infrastructure for this is public water, uh, sanitary sewer with grit and oil-water separators. Uh, drainage, uh, will comply with the D E C stormwater permit and that is a source of discussion with the town. We understand that there's a history to the development of this and the construction of a pond that's immediately southeast of, of our site. Chairman Bishani, I wonder if you maybe have some insight to this from when the, the camp proposal went through and, um... The, uh, stormwater proposal is to treat, uh, green infrastructure practices on-site. Uh, we're, we're planning to use that existing pond for detention. We're waiting, uh, specific feedback in, uh, the, the original engineer's report. We've reached out to Peron Engineering on that. Josh, I don't know if you have a chance to have anything to file on that, uh, the, the original engineering report, that'd be helpful. We could provide it on-site, but as you can imagine, providing, um, detention below surface is quite expensive. And with that pond immediately south of our site, which we're confident was, was designed for development of this site. We want to make use of the detention in that pond. There is some discussion about the, uh, ingress from the property to the east. I understand that the, both the property owner and the applicants have been in touch with them and that there is no legal easement uh, for that parking across the north section of our site, that is to be removed. And there is no direct connection between our property and, and theirs. Um, we provide a typical landscape and lighting plan, all lighting will be contained on-site. We do have about a half a foot candle near the perimeter. We suspect that that's acceptable to the town given it's a commercial use. Uh, but happy to make adjustments if you think that, that necessary. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, parking, go back to that just for a second there. Is, is that the line, is that the black line, the property line, or there on it, or how does that work?
So, the parking to the east of us is on their property. There's about a, a nine inch gap between our east property line and the west edge of their pavement, so we can develop this without impacting that. The parking I was referring to was along the north edge that's being removed. If you look at an aerial, you'll see a bunch of north-south facing parking spaces that I'm not sure who actually uses that, but it's not part of an easement and it is on, on this property wholly.
So, the cars are actually, they're on your line though, right?
Well, not on, on the east property.
Yeah, on the east property, actually.
Those are on their property, we're not impacting those at all. There is a gap between our property line and their edge of pavement. I think there was a misunderstanding of where that property line fell.
Okay, alright, that's where I'm at.
I mean, Dave Clements, representing Splash Car Wash, um, to speak to that, there was questions, and again, part of our due diligence before we even made applications to both this planning board and zoning board was to investigate those things. Aerial, uh, maps and actually some of the software used by engineers showed there may be a, um, there may be an encroachment from one property to the other to the, to the neighboring doctor's property, AccuSite. And as it turns out, after we went out and surveyed it, uh, licensed survey, there is none. It was just a, it was just a aerial depiction that was misrepresented. So, there is no, uh, there is no, uh, impact to the east at all.
Okay.
As we discussed, uh, when we met to the zoning board, we suspected the owner and developer of the property tried to solicit a sale of this property over the past fifteen plus seventeen years. Uh, put that little strip of management in there to show it's kind of like, you know, build-ready type thing for a future tenant or a future developer. Um, there is, uh, at all of the two, there is no easements, there's no legal position on that property. We spent a lot of effort to verify that, worked it out with the, uh, neighboring, uh, the neighboring property owner, which is AccuSite to the east, and that's called being removed. And our proposal is to, you know, present an integrity and use it for our own purposes.
Josh, did I, did he give you a copy of the D R C comments?
Yes.
You got it?
Yeah.
You want to go through those a little bit?
Certainly. So, the first few bullet points aren't actually questions, they're just kind of notes about, uh, for example, the engineer's report that we submitted is under review. D R C comments are very minor. D O T had no comment. Uh, we did receive the use variance on August twenty-third. Um, we do propose to use a stormwater management pond. And then the, the first question is how does the applicant intend to deal with property line splitting the westerly row of parking in the AccuSite parking lot? Will there be an easement in place, as we just discussed? Um, there is no actual impact on the, the, the westerly row of parking and there is no easement. And we're not impacting that, that westerly line of parking whatsoever. Um, project will need a SWIP due to the disturbance exceeding the town's twenty-five thousand square foot threshold. Um, we understand that we're in the process of, uh, of, of doing the calculations and, and we're awaiting, hopefully, the original engineer's report for that stormwater management pond, because we do want to make use of that. But we'll gladly, uh, supply the SWIP once we get that report from the town. Uh, the question about if, uh, water will be recycled on-site, there is no proposal to recycle water on the site. Uh, and engineering report is under review, we note that. Uh, a note about the sewer department needing to televise the lateral to see if any whys exist on that parcel, we understand that. And the question lastly, uh, for the sewer department is will there be any restrooms? Yes, there is a single bathroom, both for, uh, the public and for the, uh, employees. Howie Department asked about the elimination of the cross-access drive, um, and requested curving placed in the northeast corner. Uh, we do propose curving around the curve in the northeast corner right through here. Uh, lastly, has AccuSite-
Where, where is that curving negotiated? And there, okay.
Can I, I just want to clarify what the intent of that comment specifically was. It's where the existing access drive, all parallel to Ridge Road, that's being removed. So, when you come into the Wendy's there, you're going to be removing that, that drive aisle?
Over here.
But there's no curving, you know, shown to stop anybody from entering into the car wash.
Understood, yep, yep.
So, that was the, uh, I'm sorry, the intent of that.
Yes, yes. Thanks for that clarification, we should, glad then. Uh, lastly, has AccuSite been made aware of the plans to eliminate the northerly cross-accessway? As I understand, you know, Dave had those communications with them before he combined the property. And, and there is no, uh, easement in place. And the owner of that property is okay with, with that being removed?
Anybody, any questions, or?
I just have a curiosity, somebody maybe can answer for me. Entrance and exit to this property, to the car wash, is going to be off of Ridge Road, am I correct on that?
Well, it's, it's on the existing road immediately west of us, but into our property, it's at the southeast corner.
And the D O T, New York State D O T, had no comment whatsoever?
Well, well, no, because we're not doing any work in the right-of-way at all.
What about one or two?
And no comment from them either.
No comment at all.
Okay.
Well, it's designed, actually, to try and encourage traffic to go over to Shoe Craft Road by way of the southern road there.
Yeah, that would be like it.
Yeah, that, that's, well, that's what's going for this then.
Again, consistent to both preliminary meetings with this board, U N Commission Z D A, and all the municipality officials that commented, uh, has led us to the path of accessing it from the rear.
Yeah.
Encouraging people to split their ingress, ingress to either Shoe Craft or Ray to let people decide what's, what's the best path for them.
So, the AccuSite, they're going to, they're going to wind up having people come in from the south road, right?
Correct.
Instead of coming across the property.
Correct, that, they'll likely access with the same road as we will, the west of our site. And they'll just bypass ours and they've got a drive aisle that comes up through the west property line.
I'd just like to bring up something that I, I've noticed. It appears that there's been a change from the original concept that was sent in to what we're looking at here tonight that, that might be a little problematic. I'm trying to understand, um, what was initially sent in and showed a twenty-foot setback from the AccuSite property, which means the twenty-foot buffering between properties in the commercial district. And I'm not seeing that here on, on, within this plan set. It seems that something shifted or-
Is that to a parking space? Did that setback that you're referring to?
To the property line. So, the concept I have here shows a twenty-foot green space in between the drive aisle and AccuSite, um, which is per code. And then the one that we're looking at tonight, the drive aisle is, is right up to the property line. So, I'm just wondering what, what changed. It, it looks like maybe the center landscape, the island was significantly reduced. And the parking was-
Ah, I think they went with the double entry lane. I think that's a single and it widens out into two. But, so you're, so you're saying our east limit of pavement has to have a ten-foot setback to the property line?
Uh, no, it's a twenty-foot, it's called a buffer area, twenty-foot buffer area.
Asphalt asphalt.
Property line, yeah, asphalt to property line.
So, but it looks to me like AccuSite doesn't have that along their west boundary there.
That's, that's true. They, they may have gotten a variance for that when that was built. Which we can look into, but, um, I just want to clarify, this, this, this plan set is the most recent and up-to-date?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're going to have to look into, um, what variance existed for the property next door. But, um, that, that poses a, a challenge. I mean, that's not to say you can't go back to the zoning board. But when we asked if there were any other area variances, we wanted to take care of it all in one meeting. We were told that no other variances would be needed. So...
So, I'm told that we can, we can modify that, you said, is it ten or twenty, I'm sorry?
Uh, the requirement's twenty. Uh, you can ask it for, for less than that.
Okay.
This, this is, uh, this is actually a P D D, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, technically.
So, if it's P D D, I think we can vary the setbacks, I said.
There is some, yeah, flexibility in that.
Yeah.
What's all the parking for there? There's a lot of parking here.
So, there are twenty-two on-site spaces for vacuums and four, uh, four additional spaces for employees. Um, it's part of the operation of the car wash.
Oh, so all those vacuums near the, the entrance lane that Josh is talking about, those spaces there are all, all vacuums? Or the ones up against the building are all vacuums?
Uh, yes and yes. So-
Oh, so the vacuum is on all sides?
All but four of the parking spaces are for vacuums.
Oh, wow.
And, and I believe the four are kind of, for the employees are centrally located right here. You can tell they're a little bit smaller because the vacuum spaces are quite large, they allow for the sanction to, to reach in.
Just wondering if there's an opportunity there. Since a lot of vacuum spaces for that kind of small space and usually, you know, you have a couple of low cars, you don't have that many vacuum all at once.
Yeah, I'll let Dave speak to that because he knows it quite well.
Uh, yes, uh, it is true, that's, that's a, that's a lot of vacuum spaces, but the current business model, and they're free vacuums. All of our patrons, any, any patron that uses our washes can use the vacuum services free as well as that. Cleaners and some other accessories, uh, that we offer there for free. So, this is a, this is a pretty, you know, sizable car wash site. We suspect that we're going to have a lot of people liking using our vacuums and we don't want to have people waiting. Uh, we'd rather have empty spaces than people waiting or queued up to get into a free vacuum space. Um, the balance between those two things is, is what we're up against. Um, probably why we shifted that road out actually is we just looked at it to accommodate as many as we could, so...
You have a landscape drive, I'm looking at it here. Can you increase some of this? I mean, they're like fifteen, eighteen inches high and they're just little scrubs. First guy with the lawnmower is going to take them up. Like where you come, when the entrance coming in off of Ridge Road, you got a twenty-foot setback from the roadway, correct? And I'm looking at the drawings, the-
So, you'd like to see some more immediately west of our building?
Yes, and I think you should, yeah, I'm not a landscape engineer, I'm a nice stretch for an architect.
I'm, I'm not either, um, but I'm ready that we do have a sanitary lateral and tankage that will go along that west side. I mean, we'd be happy to increase it where we can, but we also want to show you something that's realistic and not make you think you're going to be getting, you know, huge aspens and, and Siberian spruces and things of that nature.
No, it's like, you know, rope pines or something like three-fourth foot pines, you know, something that's chirp, everybody, or whatever. Something, something that dresses it up, that's, looks like, I'm looking at what's there, they don't look like there's... You know, fifteen, thirteen to eighteen inch spruce, that's not a very big juniper. The highest plant is two feet. I think there should be some serious landscaping done at it. Um, along Ridge Road, that area there, um, that should be... That should have some trees put in there, some heavy vegetation. If, I, I'll give you an example of one, is if you look at, um, Marina Cresta, where did that, I don't remember where that is. They've got some nice trees in the front, nice brough in the front, you know, just, and they maintain it very well. Something that's attractive, you know, from the road.
We're working with Hydrick Fisher on this, or?
Oh, I know him.
We'll, we'll, yeah. One or two.
It's all in the name. Yeah, hip. Yes. That's, uh, that is, you see what I'm saying along Ridge Road there?
Yes, but we just got to kind of, to the two easements that are probably sanitary stored. Yep, there are a couple of easements, uh, along our north boundary, um, so we could augment plantings in line with the, with the plantings that are out there. See, there's like three clusters.
Yeah, there's just three little, yeah.
We, we can add to that, sure.
There was a tiny used sale, remember? He had the engineer, he was a drawman and looked at the whole, yeah, the landscape. Let me get word, now we're just landscaping. Yeah. Yeah, if you, if you, yeah, show some landscaping that you're proposing to do and then some drawing showing it, what it's looking like, you know, just a separate sheet.
An actual render.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because this is just a flat, it's, the term I always use is a big flat on a pad, you know, and really didn't look like much of anything. Back to the pond, I think when that, when that was built, Josh, you can move it up, but I'm ninety-nine percent certain that that pond was designed for that whole area of there, the drainage. I believe there's two ponds back in there, two, one, and then there's another one back through the rim. Yeah. Alright, what else, anything else you guys?
Just trying to turn it around, I think.
What's that?
Because West Side Solace was on the continent.
Did, um, something change with the entrance and exit? I kind of think it was a single...
That's what Josh was saying.
Here, uh, we had a... Uh, they were always in the, when they were here to the south, they were a little farther apart. Uh, it was a single lane entrance and dual exit.
But was, was it one connection to the road or two connections?
No, there was always two. We actually moved the exit away from stop sign to give people a queued up area. It was closer to the intersection in the concept. The note was it was down here. So you'd come out... Yeah, so we made it so that you could get it squared, squared up and...
Just doesn't show the arrows.
And is that, is that road a town road or is it still a private?
That's private, that's private road. The, the piece out, when that, when, uh, what is that? What, what is that?
Right there?
Right there, when that was developed there, uh, when they came in with that, that was a stipulation, had to be built to town standard for a town road. I mean, it was gonna be a dedicated road. Then it got changed. But the initial piece going in, when they first did that, that was a piece of dedicated road after that. It's all just private driveway and, uh...
So it doesn't matter, it's...
No. All right, the building, you got brick in it?
We got brick in it, and we don't have a blue roof. Jeff, Jeff Ladue, uh, come on up here and speak into this mic before you get yelled at like the rest of them.
Sorry. Jeff Ladue with, uh, Licensed Architect with Form Two. The intent right now, as it's shown, is using, use, um, uh, the sites, the new sites, and the renovated sites were using stone. So that's what we were proposing. But would be willing to move it to brick.
Oh, no, that's, that's, no, neither one is a track.
Okay.
That's, that's...
So the idea was, I mean, we've gone through a couple iterations. We saw, saw the more clambering color at this point. But we sort of heated the advice and the guidelines of the, or the town lobster. And made modifications. So the stone was in keeping with the current design features we're using. We just added more of it and using more traditional materials with the LP siding, which is an engineered wood product, is another product material.
So the stone, we have the gable at the end?
Yeah, it's all across the bottom.
And then it's all across that?
There's a stone sill cap and then...
At the opposite end where the tower is, what's that? At the opposite end, do you want us to...
These end?
Yeah.
The, the, the tower there was to use, uh, there's a product that is applied that looks like limestone. So that, that was the concept of those ends, so that they had sort of horizontal reveal and basically kept up the, basically the stone cap, which has that sort of limestone look in, in, at the ends. So that's what, that's what we're showing and proposed.
Okay, so when I'm looking at the drawing that I've got here.
So that's the...
Where the door is on the end, what am I looking at there?
Yeah, that would be the outboard.
That's the outdoor?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the outdoor. So the indoor, which would be facing Ridge Road is the opposite end?
That's correct.
Do you have, is that still on there too?
Uh, the, the tower, the tower does here, it's facing this, it is facing...
Ridge Road, that end?
Yes, yes.
Is that, do you have that on there?
Sure.
No, I mean, can you see it from Ridge Road side?
Do you have a graphic?
Yeah, oh, I don't have a graphic, I was, yeah. Provide one, certainly.
That's, that's where you wanted to look, what's going on there, working on?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's very, it's very similar to what you see here. The difference being on that side, the door is a high-speed roll-up. So it's kind of basically a clear plastic sort of vision panel on it. Uh, you can see it on the elevations. And then the material, basically what you're looking at material-wise would be the same on the north side. The only difference is that the tower is slightly, is two feet lower than the, the tower that we're looking at in this picture. Did it?
No. Do we have, Josh, have you got set the elevations on it? This is just all...
I believe that's what they distributed in today.
It's, uh, it's, you have one in front, it's on the front.
Oh, this came later, I didn't...
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I...
I'm sorry.
I figured the distance whether it could be a sort of...
Okay.
Good, sorry.
All right, so this is the south, north elevation. All right, now around that, can you... What's, what's that large clapboard type thing going in there? What is that, by the door?
Down here?
No, at the opposite end. Can you s... On the north end, north elevation? Where the garage, where the doors going, yeah, right there, what is that? Can that be dressed up something? Because that's, that's the main part really.
You're, you're talking here?
Yeah, all that main section right there on the north elevation.
Yeah, okay.
You know what I mean, put some more stone on there, something?
Yeah, we can add, at the end, we can change out that material and, and do something. We can do something similar to, uh, the east elevation below it.
Yep.
Or we're using the stone on the door.
Something that dresses it up because from Ridge Road you want it to look...
Yep. So we could take that element and use it on, on the Ridge Road side and so on.
So that would, I think, we need that.
Yeah.
Done? You guys stand up, all right with that?
Yeah, that's good.
No, it's...
That would dress it up, I mean, that's the main focus right there.
Well, it would look more like the east elevation then, with more...
Yes.
It would just look more like the east elevation and consistent. Do you have building materials? I know sometimes people bring in building materials, circles of the stone.
I don't have, what, what?
That's, that's stone too, right? Not like the, the rough, whatever it is, like block that has a...
No, it's actual stone, yes. It's a veneer, it's two and a half inch even. I think it, it's, it's called out on the material key to the top right. The materials are keyed out.
I see, yeah.
But no, it is actual stone, it's not a split base block.
Thank you for the story.
No, yeah, that, no, that's...
No, so did, did, this? The first generation of this was in Fayetteville, and this is just a variant of that. So it's proximity and it's guidelines, which are very similar. That's where we're going, so that it's more traditional and would be more in keeping of what you might have found in the village prior to...
Okay, let's, let's do this then, maybe. We can, we can work with preliminary approval? And then complete the drawings with everything and show us some of these technical issues. Yeah, one other thing to highlight, but it's the, uh, the, um, traffic flow. So most, and we talked about a little bit of suspension. Most of that is coming in, hopefully from the side road. But it can come in, but most of it leaves the other way. Is that the way it, out of the, goes out the back over to Shookraft Road?
Well, so we can't prevent people from heading back out to Ridge, but, but our sus, our, we expect a vast majority to head out to Shookraft.
The encouragement is that?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think people get the right, you know, making writing in terms of...
No. Yep.
It'll be good, it'll start to occur to more people.
It always amazes me how self-regulated traffic can be. And the nice thing about car washes is they intercept business that's already out there. You guys are gonna end up using this, I assure you. It's part of your daily routine. So it's not like you're gonna say, hey, we're gonna go get a car wash. You get it on the way to work, on the way to dinner, on the way home. And it's part of your travel path. And you know the area well, so you know if people head out to Ridge, it's gonna be impossible to get out. You won't do that in Level or Shookraft, so it works pretty well.
All right, then, so what we're doing is fixing that north elevation, putting some serious decoration in there, right?
Well, would you do that to the north and the south, just so they look the same? So the north, the south, the east, the west are all like...
Yeah, exactly the same.
Well, but yeah, I think, I think according to code, if I'm not mistaken, Josh, if it's a PDD, which this was designated as a section, I think we can waive the 20-foot, you know, maybe whatever. I don't know what it even is, okay? Can you see it? Where's, where's that dimension? And that side line to the east. So here I die.
It's like it's just over five feet. So I've, I've done several PDDs and PUVs all over the place in, in your right shot. Typically setbacks are changed as a result of that.
That was the reason for PDD.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. All right, um, what else? Any concerns or... I'd, I'd like to see increased landscaping and an actual drawing of a landscaping. You know, show what you put in there and stuff. I think we should, I think we should, uh, drainage is okay with that, that should be an issue there. What else?
We gotta go, are you ready to go?
We talked about changing this whole stuff on the side.
Just aesthetics of the building, right? Okay, so that we want to fix up and, and show you all landscaping.
Yes, all the right there.
You know, four foot pines along that edge of roadway or something. And out by the road, look at, look at, um...
Oh, yeah.
Um, Marina there, yes. Take a look and see, give you an idea. I mean, it's something that they maintain it nice. And that's one of the attractive car dealers around. I mean, he keeps it road to road nice.
We're happy to do that.
John, what was that, John, you said? Lightning?
I think you mentioned lighting, you said it's all contained on the side, except there was one light that may go...
Well, we have some lighting contours along the west and south in particular that are at a half a foot candle. I guess I would ask the board, to what level do you want to see at the property line? Because I mean, it is a commercial district. So typically, you know, we're told to keep it under one, one foot candle. Most people don't even know what that is, but just for your knowledge, it's an average birthday candle held one foot from your eye. Very scientific.
I guess the response to that is it's one of those obscure town laws in the past five years. It's a, it's a frackage. Because I remember reading past, but I don't know if that should be, there is a town law.
Okay. I'll, I'll look into that and we will comply with that. If it's zero at the property line, it will be zero. If it allows up to one, we'll make sure we stay at one. If I could just get clarification, if it, if it is indeed a PDD, this board is comfortable with our entrance the way it's shown? Do you not looking for us to increase the green space there?
Where are you talking?
On the, the east property line there.
On the east, on the east end of, um, we only have five feet in there. Yeah, I don't think that, I, you know what, I'd rather see it more increased, you know, to the north, the front, you know, where it's going to be seen most. That's pretty well hidden over there, there's Carriage Park there. You know, you can have Carriage Park, you know, a couple of feet from the bushes there. What do you guys think? I mean, that, I don't know, let's see.
Yeah, they haven't heard it in a while, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Focus that to where it's gonna show.
We got it, we got it.
We got it, yep.
Uh, what else? Sign is going on the, pretty much that's the sign that goes on there?
No, it's the signage.
On the east elevation?
No, it's shown, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the sign shown is typical, we have to confirm the final locations, but that is typically the one, the downwind type. And then there's that, uh, free vacuums, uh, two car wash signs that get, that are shown. So it's basically...
Probably, you know, it'd be good then too is, um, maybe when you come back in is itemize where your signs are. You know, how many signs, what they are, where they're located. Just on a sheet, you know what I mean?
Yeah, there's a sign package that, that, if it hasn't been, it will be.
Okay, I don't, I didn't see, I didn't see.
They'll show site signs, structural signs and...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's better we get the signage approved as a part of the site.
Yep, yep, we can do that.
We take some trips later in our road.
All right, so if we move with the preliminary, what do we want to see here? Increased landscaping in the north end? I see the, uh, north end entrance around the garage door. All right, let's, let's get one started.
I think so. Elevations to look to the, the east and west elevation.
Yeah. All right, oh, you want to motion, what are you doing?
Motion, do you see?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Motion for unlisted action. The town lobster planning board considered request by applicants slash car wash incorporated to construct 7,000 square foot wash facility in a 2.16 acre parcel having the SPO number 079.15-1-16.003, located at 1013 Ridge Road in the median intensity commercial perspective. Planning board determines that the proposed action is an unlisted action based on the following. Number one, the action includes 7,000 square foot facility, which exceeds the 4,000 square foot threshold for a type two action as defined by section 617.7C1 of SEER, for nine residential structures. The planning board determined that the action is subject to senior agency review pursuant to Part 617.6B4 of SEER, and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration to the criteria to determine significance set forth in section 617.7C1 of SEER and as one, considering the information contained in the short environmental assessment form Part 1, dated July 5th, 2022. Number 2, consider public comments directed to the planning board during... To be of public terms. Sorry. September 6th, 2022. And 3, completed parts 2 and 3 of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore be resolved if the town lobster planning board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of laxity reviews. Be further resolved if the town lobster planning board is authorized to take out actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration of discharge for the town lobster's planning board's responsibility to lead the agency for this action. Be further resolved if the town lobster planning board views on the information and analysis above resolve supporting action reason and discuss the action by the town lobster planning board as documented in minutes for this meeting. The proposed action will not result in any significant environmental events. Be further resolved if the town lobster planning board therefore makes a determination of lax significance. Be further resolved if the town lobster planning board, based on above reasons, issues negative declaration as evidenced by ex-determination.
Second.
I think the motion, before we vote on that, I have a question. Did you, I know this is a public area, but now a theory, did you open up the floor? No, I didn't, John, you're right, thank you. No, anyone? Guess we're closed, want to say anything?
No.
We're closed, the public area, we gotta back up. Thanks, John. Go ahead.
Now you get to vote.
All in favor?
All right.
Preliminary approval, go with that? Everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
All right, then we'll make it... Well, one of the things, we put these in, um, we want to increase the landscaping and the size of the shrubbery, uh, to be satisfactory to the board. I mean, that, when you see it, you know what it is. Sure, you've not seen it, I can't tell you what to do. The other thing was enhance the building... The other thing was enhance the building design a little bit, with more...
Stone?
Stone, whatever you got on it. And what else, anything else you need to have there? You want to, Josh, you have indoor curb, so get the, the, the...
Right.
Replace in that spot, anything else?
Lighting package, signage package.
Lighting, uh, yeah. You probably should have, you know, that would be, that's good, Joe, too, is, is have the, uh, uh, cut sheets of whatever you're using for your lighting, the types of fixtures, you know, where they're going, that's generally something we always get.
We should probably get some samples of materials used.
You want to see some material samples, some small pieces or whatever? Bring that in, anything else?
I mean, that's everything, I mean, just...
Those are the main items, right? Yeah. All right, and we'll add those, those are part of the preliminary, and we'll make that subject to the PRC comment. And subject to a letter of credit posted with the Town Webster. At that, the applicant has already obtained his, uh, the variances, the used variants. Normally, it is being conveyed to the town, but it would be to address any, so usually all improvements should be... All improvements shall be constructed according to specifications of the Town Webster. All roadwork, roadway construction to be in accordance with special regulations set forth by the town. Site work to be in compliance with the standards of the Town Webster. Preservation of trees, there's none there. Compliance with all requirements of any state, county, and town agency. Well, we'll put this one, address the drainage, just verify that, address the drainage, lighting signage, landscaping, buffering, burbing, snow storage. Downspouts, how are you doing your downspouts off your roof? You're going, going to stone or just...
Underground, yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so downspouts are connected, but, uh, depict all parking and your preliminary design, I believe you have that, then proceed to final approval. Okay, you have a motion in a second.
Mr. Pishan?
Aye.
Mrs. Warren?
Aye.
And Mr. Mauka?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Pencil?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jeremy?
Aye.
Okay, rough set, with that.
Very much.
Yeah, see if you can come up with some good landscaping, ordinarily, you'd get a good design.
We got the basement this time, we got the landscaping.
What's that?
We got the basementary this time, we got the landscaping.
And then we're surprised, and there's something after that. All right, thanks, guys. I guess that's it, is it?
July nineteenth from August second.
We got two meetings?
Yeah, two meetings.
All right, that's it. Okay, I guess that's it for this evening, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
We need to approve, uh, two sets of minutes, one from July nineteenth and one from August the second.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July nineteenth as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hope staying on this night here.
Uh, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented for August the second.
You want to object?
No. Aye.
Is anybody opposed?
Could I ask a question? Is there a reason why we don't put the, uh, minutes on air, they always go off air, is there a reason?
Yeah, nothing, because just, nothing to do with the meeting, we could do it, but...
That would be my suggestion, but, that's me.
During the meeting?
Yeah.
We could do that during the meeting.
The minutes are on the west side after.
Well, I know that, it's the meeting, yeah, it's the regular meeting.
Yeah, I don't think it was ever ready to build, it was always, uh...
I know, isn't it funny, like, late at night, it's like, ooh, fall. Cold, dark, rainy, some place.
It's here.
It's here.
I think inconsistency is a very important thing.
Oh, what they are, one thing. It's like, you could have a kitchen, see, every side of the building, like, you can have a kitchen in your basement and still have a, like, a single family.
This, this house...
Yeah, but that's the, that's a different kind of a setup, though, they've got a...
They've got a kitchen and a dining room and a...
Dining room and everything, you know?
So this house, the, the brothers, they built the house, one of them downstairs, the other one upstairs.